Evening, everybody. We're going to call the meeting to order. If you would please stand for the pledge allegiance. Alex, you want to do roll call?
Sure. Brian?
Livy?
Here.
Vanessa?
Here.
Tanya?
Here.
Fritz?
We do have a quorum. And we need to consider a motion for our meeting agenda if there's no changes this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda for tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we need to look at a motion to approve the minutes from April fifteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. First up, we have a new employee for our street and utilities department, Mr. Tim Goen.
If you don't mind if you step up to the microphone and.
Adam?
Hey, Tim?
How are you?
Tim is our newest hire. He's been with us, what, going on a week now?
Two.
Two weeks, okay. And we're glad to have him. He's doing a fantastic job, hit the ground running, and just thought we'd bring him and introduce him to everyone. So you see him out there. It's Tim Goen. He's our new street utilities operator.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming aboard.
Glad to have you. Yeah. Thanks for coming in.
That was painful.
Let's see everything you want to add.
Good talk.
Okay, so we have next up the monthly updates from NDOT and Milestone on the Broadway project. Steve? Good evening.
Good evening, Ian and Grant are both online tonight. So since last meeting, I'd had one inquiry on the State Road sixty-seven project email. And that was from Gabriel Morell. She was asking about barricades on Maryland Stat Street. After we went and looked at it, we cannot move the barricades back any further. Otherwise, it'd impede the driveway of the house that's on the corner, and then we'd be able to see you on the outside. And the other thing is, I got a sidewalk there, so I couldn't put the barricades up. So they'll have to stay in place, unfortunately. Update, water line is all installed. Get ready to do testing tomorrow. Grant will surely update you on where we're at, the progress weather permitting on that piece. Subgrade treatment continues. We're down to Oak Street right now. And then they started digging out. We're all the way down to Gardner's right now to dig out. So as we proceed through, then we'll let everybody know. Once we take out the temporary drives, I've been talking to all the business owners downstairs there, what's happening, what's going on with that piece.
Good.
That's all I have. Grant?
Hello, everyone. We're continuing with our water line. The testing starts tomorrow. Our crews are still laying storm pipe down Broadway. And then we're continuing with the subgrade treatment and dig out like Steve said. So we are still on track to meet our completion date as well. Thank you.
Any questions? I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Appreciate it. Next up, we have a special event request for the Fortville Christians Unite event for Sunday, September fifteenth, and that is. I did? I'm sorry. Ball Days first, excuse me. Saturday, June first, for the Mount Vernon Optimist Club. Sorry, guys. I put a check wrong, the wrong one.
So we, Jamie, my wife, the president, she submitted all the information for the, for the Ball Day event. In that, did you guys get the parade route?
Yeah.
I believe it's the exact same as last year.
Yeah, I've reviewed it. It's fine.
Okay. So I guess I, they sent an email saying we need to have representatives here. So we're kind of just like, okay, why? But if you guys have any questions for me, then shoot away.
So you guys are not going to be playing ball here at all? Is that the plan?
So that is the plan. And the only reason for that is this parking availability over there where the Hampton Fields. I would need double that parking because we would have three games going on at one time on Hampton, two games going on at one time at Judy Terrell and Red Brick, and there's just not enough parking there to pull it off. And it kind of another reason for it was, was just we need the concession sales, and we don't have an ability to do concessions at Fortville Field. So it would kind of have been, let's invite as many vendors as possible, which they're not really equipped for, the local ones. So instead of just getting a twenty percent kickback check from vendors, we figured we would just delay the games later into the day, travel over to Mount Comfort and play the games. But parking was mainly the main reason as to why we decided against that, just because at that time, when we kicked that thing off for all those games at one time, there's not enough parking to accommodate all the families.
Maybe else any questions or looking for a motion to approve them?
I can make a motion to approve the special event request for the Ball Day Parade for Saturday, June first, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, guys. Appreciate you coming in. Yep.
Hope you have a good day.
Yep.
Well done.
No, you guys don't need to set up the barricades the morning of.
You'll have them out.
The department will have it all laid out where it needs to be. And then as long as you guys get them set up.
Do they have to have a wrap at that, at each barrier?
No.
We will, though.
Okay.
We'll have some, we'll have someone at each barrier, whether they're adults or we use the Boy Scouts. So we'll have someone there kind of making sure no one just goes through it.
I feel like that happened last year.
It happened a lot last year.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Probably construction, I'm like, anything else, people that aren't aware. Okay, now we have up the Christian, the Christians, Fortville Christians Unites for September fifteenth, Stephanie Gars.
Right, it's pretty much what we did last year. We were hoping to do again. The only thing that wasn't in our forums that I didn't find a spot to put, is there a way we could do a rain date like the next Sunday? Is that possible, or is that not something that?
Possible. We'd have to check the calendar. Heath, you know if there's anything else going on in there?
Yeah. Yes.
That would be the only issue is if it's already scheduled.
They just asked me to ask if we could do a, have a rain date just in case. We've never had to yet. And, you know, God willing, we won't need to this time. But other than that, it's the same that we've done. I don't know if there's any questions for what we're doing.
I don't have any question.
I don't have any questions either. I think I'm good with this, too.
We have a front porch view. It's always a very nice event. They're real quick cleaning up, too, and setting up. It's finally, it's nice to us. Yeah, weather last year was great.
It was. Good.
Again, same with the Ball Day. You guys will need to set up the, but we'll set them out, and you'll need to set up the barricades.
I don't think we have anything closing.
You're not closing Veterans Court there?
I don't know. What's that? What Veterans Court?
In between the church and the park.
Um, I don't know, because I think we parked there.
Okay.
But I don't know if they, did they close it last year?
I don't remember, to be honest. Okay.
I didn't think we closed A Streets.
Okay. I just didn't know, since you're having a couple vendors out there, if that's where they were, that's normally. Okay.
Came in off of whatever the back road is there.
Church.
Church, yeah, the other side of it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I haven't, anybody else have any question?
I don't.
I'll make a motion to approve special event request for Fortville Christians Unite event for Sunday, September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And a rain date for September twenty-second, as long as the calendar is clear. Heath will check that.
A second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Shouldn't we call it the maze? During votes, shouldn't we call it maze? I don't know. That just occurred to me. Why can't it? We should. Yeah.
Uh, next up, we have the second reading or final approval of Ornis twenty twenty-four, three B, a rezone for the thirty-eight acres from industrial one to planned unit development for Merschel Louth project. Adam?
All right, good evening. For the record, I'm Adam Zachlikowski, the planning and building director for the town of Fortville. So if you recall on this project, the developer, of course, is Loth Group. Current owners on the property is the Merschel family, known as Fortville Nineteen LLC. And we're talking about a piece of property that's on the north side of a thousand north or Garden Street, and it's east of the south side of downtown Fortville. The zoning on the property is industrial one, and the applicant is seeking a rezone to planned unit development, or PUD as it's called, to allow for a multifamily market rate apartment complex, plus some light industrial buildings. And it's about thirty-eight acres in size. So on the housing side of things, they're looking to construct seven three-story buildings to contain a total of two hundred and twenty-five apartment units. And that's up from two hundred four, which was proposed at first reading. It would also contain a clubhouse, a pool, and a dog park. And per the language in the PUD, it says that it may consist of fewer buildings, but the same amount of units. On the employment side of things, on the east side of the project, there would be two light industrial buildings. One would be about eighty-five thousand square feet, and the second one would be about a hundred and fifty-six thousand square feet. And the electrical contractor in power is looking to relocate their corporate headquarters from Indianapolis Lawrence area here to Fortville. And if we take a look at the property, you can see it's this undeveloped piece of farmland right outside the downtown area. And the zoning, which is I dash one, is a grandfathered designation that came over from Hancock County, which we still honor today. I believe the project, when it was rezoned, they were looking to do an automotive test track on the property. So if we take a look at the site plan, this is the same one that you saw at first reading, in which the residential units are on the west side, and those light industrial buildings are on the east side. So we've got a zoomed-in version here that we can always refer back to as necessary. In terms of the concept elevations that are a part of the PUD document, you'll note that on the left side of the screen here, you can see three images that are a part of that PUD in terms of the overall quality that they're looking to have as part of this PUD and the, and the design feel, modeled after the top complexes in Carmel, the center one is in Fishers, and then the bottom one is a new complex in Noblesville. So that's been updated since the version that you all saw at first reading. And then off to the right is just a general concept for what those light industrial buildings could look like. So in terms of the comprehensive plan map that's on, on file from two thousand sixteen for this area, it shows it as industrial in totality. And then in two thousand seventeen, there was a master plan that was done just for the South Madison Tiff District that basically refined the designs a little bit more from what was shown in that two thousand sixteen plan, and frankly, made some changes. And so on the east side, it was shown to be a light industrial warehouse in that darker purple. And then on the west side of the road are some what they were calling flex office. Could also be light industrial there as well. But again, mainly office is what was intended there. And then further to the west, the idea was to have single-family traditional residential in that area. So the analysis that you're asked to consider, the, there's an analysis that's based on required considerations per Indiana code for rezones. So we'll quickly go through each of these, along with a staff opinion. So the first one is, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan, this rezone? I'd say partially yes. So the town of Fortville Future Growth Concept Map, the one from two thousand sixteen, identifies this area as industrial. The subsequent South Madison Tiff District Master Plan shows this area as single-family residential, commercial flex office, and light industrial. Though it should be noted that the comprehensive plan text emphasizes the importance of having a wide variety of housing choices, whether that's single-family, whether that's multifamily. Second item to consider is, is it consistent with the current conditions or the character of the current structures? Really, that question is not applicable for this property since there are no structures on the property. Third item is, is it consistent with the most desirable use of the land? I'd say yes. That will, it will complete the South Madison Boulevard from Broadway to Garden as part of the project, which has been a goal of the town for nearly twenty-five years. The apartments function as a suitable transition use from the single-family to the west, to the light industrial, to the east. The fourth element out of the five to consider is, is it consistent with the conservation of property values? I'd say yes. Stringent development standards requiring a high-quality development within a planned unit development will ensure property values on nearby properties are maintained. And the PUD approach provides for some certainty on what will be constructed on the property, because it includes a concept plan, includes concept building elevations, things that are not ordinarily required with straight zoning. And then the last item, is it consistible, consistent with responsible growth and development? I'd say yes. Allowing a high-quality multifamily development in a walkable urban environment meets a subjective. And then secondly, providing light industrial development east of South Madison Boulevard will provide for additional employment opportunities in the town, and developing that area into employment uses has been a goal of the town for at least a decade. In terms of Ramon's strengths and public comments, at the plan commission meeting, there were some concerns about traffic and the overall layout of the project. The, in terms of the plan commission recommendation, they issued a positive recommendation by a vote of four to one with the following conditions. And each of these three conditions have been folded into the PUD document that you have before you tonight for consideration. First one was to use the previous layout of the project, the one that was dated February twenty-seventh. The second one involved the youth, use of ephes, and ephes is, is essentially like a stucco-like material that in certain circumstances can seem pretty plain on a building. And so the plan commission advised on having five percent maximum use of that material on the buildings. And then the third point that they had was to use the revised renderings, which were presented to you via slide, and again, are, are in the PUD ordinance as well. You'll note that that was a much enhanced level of architecture from what was originally proposed in first reading. The plan commission president also followed up. He had sent out an email just advising on the need for a traffic study. That was something that was talked about quite a bit at the plan commission meeting, but did not make its way as a formal condition, one way or the other. The traffic study would mainly deal with what level of improvements would be needed to one thousand north, whether we need a turn lane, any sort of passing blisters, things of that nature. And so at the time, the developer had mentioned they seemed to be amenable to doing a, a simple traffic study for that. So the next steps, if you were to approve the zoning and including the PUD document tonight, is that the site plan, the building elevations, the landscaping, the lighting, that would all need to be approved by the plan commission after the zoning is done. And so, but they would evaluate it based on what is shown in the adopted PUD. And so probably the light industrial portion would probably come in first, as it seems like the developers indicated that's what they'd like to work on first. And then the plan commission would also review a primary plat. So I think one way of looking at the development process is kind of like a cone, meaning at the, at the beginning, there, there are a lot of opportunities for changes, a lot of opportunities for modifications. And then as the development process moves along, ultimately to the point of getting a building permit, then the amount of flexibility that the decision makers have to make changes understandably gets less and less with time. So each element of the development process builds upon what's been approved in the past, much as is the case with our comprehensive plans, where we had that basic plan from two thousand sixteen, and then subsequently, the council at the time wanted to look at the Tiff District specifically to see how to design those. And as a result of that, some of those standards that were called for in the master plan made its way into our zoning ordinance and was codified that way as part of our design standards that we, we use today. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them. The developer and their land use attorney are here as well. Thank you.
Folks want to have a say, or do you want us to do our questions first?
I'll start very briefly.
Thank you. My name's Brian House, partner with law firm Pritzkin Davis. It's my pleasure this evening to be representing the Loth Group. You've heard a lot of this before, so I will be as brief as you like. And if you have questions, comments, I'll just add a couple of points. Number one, traffic study, that's just fine. Loth is willing to undertake that at its expense. And then, in my view, that's not a small expenditure, but it exhibits their commitment to this project. The second point is, I think from a land use perspective, as Mr. Zachlikowski's pointed out, the current zoning is industrial across the board. If someone came forward with an industrial project, if it met the requirements of the ordinance, which wouldn't that be that tough to do, it's a done deal. Here, I think you have an excellent transition between the residential properties to the west and the keeping it light industrial to the east, again, consistent with the comprehensive plan. And last but not least, Empower is ready to break ground tomorrow, if it could be done. So Mr. Zachlikowski is correct. There is still a detailed review process. I think that's under sections five, two, three, and four of your unified development ordinance. We think it's a great project. We think it'll be a benefit to Fortville. We've tried to listen to your input and be responsive to Sam. And with that, I will shut up unless you have additional questions and comments.
Yeah, does anybody else have questions? I have some questions.
Good.
So first of all, I think the one that would require some discussion and maybe a visual would be the, the alternate site plan that was provided by the public, that was provided in the public domain on Facebook. So Adam, do you happen to have that available? Just for some background, somebody, somebody from the public who may or may not be on the call, actually, I think this person might be on the call, provided an alternate site plan. And so I just wanted to give that person an opportunity to present and explain that. But if it's going to take a minute to pull that up, then.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have it handy. I know the gentleman who created it is on the line and might be able to share it via that method.
Right. I mean, it was in the email, but no.
I don't have it handy. Sorry, I don't. What, what I will say is that in terms of, of any any designs that the public may have, we certainly always welcome those things. I would say that the design that we saw, when we saw it, was after the plan commission had already made their decision. So it would have been nice to see that earlier in the process. But that being said, as counsel, what you can certainly do, if you're inclined, is if you feel that there is another plan that has some validity to it, and you want staff and also the plan commission, more importantly, to review it and weigh in on it, then you always have the ability, instead of approving in here tonight, is to kick it back to them, say, there's a plan that we think has some legs. We want you to look at it. The only, the only trade-off could be is I don't know what their timeline is from Loth's group. I don't know that they've looked at the site plan. I don't know what they think about it. But like anything, there is a developer, or there's a business in Empower that's looking to move sooner than later out here. So you would have to weigh as to whether sending it back to the plan commission and having another month delay is worth it or not, and worth that risk. And maybe it is, maybe it isn't. I'll, I'll leave that up to you all to decide, but.
If I could jump to a point of clarification, I don't believe they can kick it back to the plan commission for a rehearing. You have the ability, under state law and our, our zoning code, to impose conditions, modifications that we can discuss here tonight. But continuing this back to the plan commission is the opposite. It's, you approve or you, you deny. And if you don't act within ninety days, it's, you've approved it. So.
So would an alternate site plan then be some kind of an amendment or a condition with an approval?
I think it's a discussion with the applicant tonight.
If it, I meant ultimately, if we all agreed. Is that how that would work? That would be an approval with an amendment or something?
A condition.
A condition, okay.
Kind of like, like the, what we were talking about with the traffic study. I would, I would view that as a kind of a condition that, of approval, if the council goes that way, to incorporate that as one of the requirements.
Okay.
Both myself and Mr. Thomas have absolutely no clue what you're talking about. We understand the issue, but we've not seen any alternative site plan prepared or submitted by anyone.
That's why we'd like to discuss it now. So if we approve this, then it is in full force and effect upon passage per section five here. So, you know, we're signing off on whatever's in this document. So we would like to discuss it. Somebody from the public made a design, I think in good faith, because this is a person who has a relevant skill set and took an interest in it. And so we would like to at least have a look at it and let the person defend it, because what happens here on the town council is people go online and say, nobody ever listens to us. So we're trying to create an opportunity to let people be heard.
I, I would, I would say, though, just as a matter of law and procedure, that opportunity was at the public hearing at the plan commission. And Monday morning quarterback stuff happens all the time. You know, now you've got an approved certified recommendation from the plan commission as required by the zoning code and state law. And then you have a very limited number of actions that the town council can take based on that certified recommendation, which recommends approval of the site plan, I think the original one that was presented, but as Adam went through. I think the original one that was presented, uh, but as Adam went through. So I don't believe that legally it would be appropriate to look at another site plan. If you, if the council, majority of the council does not like the site plan that is, is in front of you as certified by the plant commission, I believe you have the, the ability, the flexibility under the law and the town's code to discuss some potential conditions or, or modifications, if the applicant's willing to do that. If they're not, and you're not happy, I believe that the appropriate course would be to deny uh, the application, which would then put the applicant in the position of, okay, do we want to look at this site plan and substantially modify it and go back to the plant commission with the new site plan and go through the process again. But as we're, as we sit here tonight, you've got a certified recommendation of approval with the plan and the conditions that we've talked about. And, and this really legally and procedurally isn't the time to, to reopen, to consider a, 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 another site plan. That was at the, that was at the plant commission and um, it's just the process, legal process under state and local law.
Understood. Understood. Things happen as they happen.
So from a, from a petitioner's standpoint, um, I'm Ryan Thomas with the Loth group. From the petitioner's standpoint, we're indifferent on the layout. So what has happened here, uh, just to be crystal clear, the layout, i- if we changed it, this would be the fifth time that we've changed it. And, and we don't, it's not that we don't care. We care very much. We're indifferent to the, to the geometry of the layout. We're a little bit caught between planning staff, planning commission, and town council. And we're kind of a rubber ball that keeps bouncing between those three things. We, we had it different the last time and planning commission made a condition and said, we'll give you a favorable recommendation if you make a condition that you kick it back to the way that it was before. Fine, we're, we're totally good with that. One other thing I, that I stated at planning commission was the geometry on this is, is, is not set in stone by any stretch of the imagination. We, we haven't done formal engineering. We haven't done formal building layout and building dimensions. And so it, it is likely going to change. And this begged the question at planning commission of what is a, um, what was the term substantial or substantive change?
Substantial change.
What, what constitutes a substantial change from what you would or would not say, for argument's sake, if you approved this today, what would be a quote unquote substantial change by definition that would require us to go back to planning commission, modify the architecture, modify the site plan? I'm not sure that we clearly define that, but I guess my message to you at the council level is we, we're, we're indifferent. Um, how this layout goes and, and whether or not we utilize this layout, any of the previous three or four layouts, whether or not we potentially use a layout that was, that was um, drafted by um, a citizen. We're, we're willing to entertain all those things. Um, there will be definitive reasons why we choose the path that we do, most likely centered around something to do with engineering. But we're, we're indifferent.
But the, but just for clarification, the, the PUD ordinance that we're signing has a certain site layout in it, and that would be the one that is built, right? Whatever's in here, not something else.
Not, okay, may I? And Alex can chime in on this. Uh, well, first of all, I, I agree with Ryan, of course, in large measure that we're indifferent. But we haven't seen this competing site plan, so I would caveat that statement. So I, you know, if it proposes a, a go in the center of this development, uh, that's probably not a go for us. I, I mean, we just, can anybody tell me, you apparently have seen it. How does it differ from what we've presented in this ordinance?
We've all seen it and it's on Facebook and I sent it around by email to everybody sitting up here. So it's, it's on, it's on Facebook. Anybody could pull it up right now on their phone.
And that's super. I tell my kids, I look at my Facebook page once a calendar quarter if I need to.
That, that's fine. And we should really just pull it up and have a look, you know, so it's, it's not like a strange thing. But I just want to clarify, this document says that whatever's in here is what we're approving and it's in full of force and effect immediately upon passage. But you just said that it could change. So which is it? Are we approving specifically what's in here or something's going to change?
What and when can change are the fine, final, what I'll call the final details, when it goes back to planning staff under the provisions of your ordinance, which I've cited, and I think it's 5, 2, 3, and 4, which is final site plan approval. So I will say this, if the change of the, what I'll call the publicly submitted site plan is something to do with parking or something like that, that's not a problem for the Loth group. If it's something that's truly significantly differing from the conceptual site plan that's been submitted, then that could be an issue.
It is. It divides it. It divides the sections up differently, which would be more costly to you to lay it out that way. Plus it has large parking areas, like sea of asphalt for parking. So.
I guess a couple of things. One, we've worked with um, Joe and Adam in particular on trying to avoid that very thing.
Let's see it.
Sure.
Maybe.
Yeah. Yeah, unless, unless we bring up Facebook.
Larger on his computer.
Oh, Alex, got it. Yeah, that's it. That's it. That's the newest one today. This is the second one he's provided. This is the second one he's provided. The other one needs to be different than that.
I wish they could put it up on the screen.
Everyone else, you're welcome to bring up Facebook. Yes, ma'am.
It'll be hard to find. It's um, I don't know how to show you guys. This is the second version of it, so it's been late coming. It'd be nice if it'd been here sooner, but.
So as Adam mentioned, I think the person who made this, uh, Josh, I think he's on the line and he may, I don't, I don't know if uh, he can share his screen or if that's something that goes on much. But um, that my point in bringing this up was that he uh, is qualified in this area. He has some relevant qualifications. He made a design in good faith, not really quite on the correct timeline, as Alex mentioned. Um, but you know, when somebody in the public in good faith makes a contribution and they're interested for it to be considered, I, I would, I'd like to at least give the option of consideration, even if we all, if, if we, if it's too late or if we don't like it, that's fine. But it's nice to at least give uh, people a chance. So um, you know, so uh, they had a chance to see it over here, people looking on Facebook. Uh, Josh, if he's on the line, you can show your screen. That might be helpful.
Uh, Josh is here. Uh, I'm not in a position to be able to share my screen as I'm on my phone at the moment. But I don't know if this is the right time to have public comment or if there's needs to be some.
Right ahead, Josh.
Some opening, okay. So really the point of, I guess, the versions that I've shared is exploring an option that certainly just looks at, for the apartments section, looks at a different approach to where parking lands as it relates to um, street frontages. So um, really, it's a, it's a matter of trying to maintain some integrity of the master plan um, with, with parallel parking along streets, but also keeping par- parking exposure absent from South Madison Boulevard. So again, a couple of layouts that attempt to achieve that.
Do you have an opinion on what you just saw?
Uh, I will, uh, and I want to put it in context, okay? Frankly, much of the discussion bait, if you want to call it that, from start to today has been on the positioning of parking as it relates to the multifamily units, okay? So the first Loth plan put the majority of the parking internal to the project, which is similar to what, and I'm not sure what Josh's last name is, but that's similar to what he proposes. Now, with all due respect to him, there are a few things that we just don't know. He's got a big triangular detention pond. Again, topography studies have not been done. The reason there's flexibility on the number of buildings is you may find that you wanted to put a building someplace, but the soils just aren't amenable to that. Okay, so Loth put the parking um, internal to the buildings and your planning director suggested that they be external. In other words, parking along South Madison. Planning director's uh, rationale, which frankly, I think in consideration is quite appealing, is he wanted to preserve a, a neighborhood feel to the apartments. In other words, I think of it as kind of the, the New York City.
Boulevard.
You walk out the front door, there's some parallel parking, there's landscaping and so on, and it's not a big parking lot. So instead of looking out your front windows and your door, it's not a parking lot. Loth really is, I won't say ambivalent, but is flexible. But as to where the parking falls, I want to say two more things. Number one, uh, I was impressed with Mr. Zach Lekowski's rationale for what he proposed. It's not my money. I care about my client, but I think he has an interesting idea. Uh, the second thing, which is more important, is that, and I don't want to be too pointed here, M Power is on a very short leash. We want to be breaking ground for that building in July. And frankly, if that is not feasible, there is another site, not in Fortville, that they will immediately go to. It's not, they want to be in Fortville because they're from this area. The other site's not all that far away, but they just have to get moving. There's a construction timeline and so on. Last thing I will ever say is, or not ever say, but last thing I'll say tonight. You know, the great thing about being a lawyer is it's always something new. And I've been doing this for 41 years and I have never yet, until tonight, seen the public uh, presentation of a site plan. I respect Josh and I respect his efforts. If the debate is where to put the parking, we're still willing to have that conversation, but we don't want to have it in a form or fashion that precludes this project from moving forward and loses M Power, which is the anchor tenant, if you will. So I appreciate particularly uh, council member Pataglia's uh, deference to the public. It's a wonderful thing, but um, I think that Mr. Intermill is correct. With all due respect to Josh, you know, it's the 11th hour and we got a new site plan and there are sound reasons why the plant commission recommended the site plan you see before you tonight.
So with that, going back to the point about it changing after we approved this tonight, what, what was that about as well?
Final site plan approval is a function of the planning director and it takes place under the detailed requirements. Alex, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's 5, 2, 5, 3, and 5, 4 of the unified development ordinance. So the sun has not set on a discussion of the location of parking, but it's pretty close to sundown.
But just to clarify, if we approve this tonight, then there is more work that you're going to do that is going to further guide what you're going to want to do with the site plan? And then that will be subject to Adam's approval? Is that right?
That is correct.
And the planning commission.
And the planning commission.
I can give, give you maybe a hypothetical. We had, we had this conversation as well um, at the public hearing of the plant commission. What's a substantial change that would then trigger the need for Adam to put the site plan back in front of the plant commission? Say they get out and they're doing their drainage analysis and all the topo and the things that engineers, smart engineers do. And they're like, you can't have any parking up here in the north. And so now we've got to have a big parking lot in the southern part of the thing. And we've got houses there, of the residential component. I would say that's a substantial modification of whether you have a big parking lot into the, the south. And that would kick it back. But if it's within the spirit of the site plan that's before you this evening, then yeah, it's a function of Adam going through. And as the, the code requires, the subdivision control, you know, requirements need to be met to the extent they're not modified in the PUD and so on and so forth. So they've got to get their engineers, as Mr. House said, and, and um, take a look at the site, see what's feasible, what's not. Hopefully, the, the land and drainage and all those things allow construction to take place and, and be built, you know, reasonably similar to what's presented. And if it's substantially different than that, th- there's a process to make sure that um, what is built in the alternative is approved by the plant commission and not just Adam.
So smaller changes just Adam, bigger changes back to planning commission?
Within the spirit, as long as the spirit of the site plan is maintained, my position would be that that's eh, eh, part of the authority you delegate to your planning director by, by town code.
Okay. And so just to, you know, unless anybody else had any comments or questions about the alternate site plan that we sort of maybe just looked at, it sounds like your opinion is it's different enough that it would take longer to do? Or was it indifferent or was it different enough to take longer?
It's, it's different and I would say substantially different, all right? So that would be an issue that it could come back to plan commission. I, I sometimes am criticized for my bluntness. This may be one of those moments. I think Ryan said it best, we have been the ping pong ball of the parking location debate. We want to move forward with the project. If we get clear direction from decision makers as to what to do, we'll do it.
I really don't care where the parking is, just personally, I'm just going to say that. I care more about what it looks like and it, and the residential feel and it being part of what our community already is. So that stuff means nothing to me. I mean, I'm not concerned about it either way. I want people to have, I love the boulevard idea. I want, I like that. So I like the original design more so than I do anything else. But I know, I know in development that things are going to change. Once you do the engineering and stuff like that, it is going to be different. But the PUD allows us that opportunity to control that and to help you, uh, help give you what the town wants, you know? So we, we have, that's all this is doing, is allowing us to have that control.
Where does the PUD give us control over that?
They have to come to us for a site, site plan, engineering, all that stuff has to come back this.
Where does that say that in here?
That's in our PUD ordinance. I mean, that's how it's written.
No, in this, this is the ordinance. It doesn't say that in here.
Eh, in the zoning code, I believe is what Tiny is referring to.
Yeah, I'm sorry, zoning code.
In these sections that Mr. House keeps referring to, section 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, maybe even some more in there. But that's the general area that governs planned unit development under the town's zoning code. And so even though this, this ordinance changes the zoning of this parcel to be PUD and has the specifics, the site plan and whatnot that you're considering. But then there's a layer of the town's code that is, and I referenced it, that, okay, even though you've got the PUD ordinance that changes the zoning from industrial to PUD, um, you still have to look at the subdivision control guidelines and stuff to go through site plan approval and all of those requirements, even though they're not in the zoning ordinance, still apply to the parcel and the development via the town's code.
This document should reference that, because if that's not referenced here, then that's a broken referential link.
I, legally, I don't think it, it has any effect if, if it's the, the council's desire to have a additional recital or something like that in there. Just because it's not referenced doesn't negate the applicability and the enforceability of the town's zoning code.
Okay, I, I.
Your UDO is very, very clear. I, 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 the approval of the planned unit development ordinance is simply a function of land use. Whether you go from the existing industrial development to something that is different from pure industrial development. The beauty, if you will, of the PUD process is that the petitioner must come forward with more detail than normally would be required. Uh, in addition to a site plan, which is conceptual to a large degree, we have provided conceptual elevations. And again, there's much discussion of those. Uh, what you see this evening, particularly on the multifamily, is what I'll call round two. What you see this evening, particularly on the multifamily, is what I'll call round two. Because we got a lot of feedback on what people wanted to see. Loth originally presented as conceptual elevations of the multifamily, similar, a, a project that they had done and constructed in Franklin, Indiana. Members of the Plan Commission said, we want to see more detail. There's a strong preference for flat roofs here in Fortville, Indiana. And one of the renditions provides that. But again, these are conceptual in nature and the refinement of these concepts under your UDO rests with your planning department. Unless the refinement morphs into a so-called substantial change, in which case it goes back to Plan Commission.
And, and so just to, okay, so I understand then, even though, you know, I, I read a document at face value. So if it doesn't reference, you know, our other zoning laws, then I just take it at face value where I don't see a mechanism. But if the mechanism is there, even though it's not referenced here, that's fine. And so that's why I was asking the questions about, well, what, you know, what would change? What could we expect to change about the site layout? So it could change and then it would change in accordance with the zoning laws, right? But then I think just to kind of conclude on the discussion about the alternate site plan, I think the point of that alternate site plan, which Josh, I think, kind of mentioned a little bit, but maybe, maybe not very directly is, I think the, I think the idea there was to really continue the streets that are there. Whereas the site plan that was approved by the Planning Commission last week, it kind of, it kind of segregates a little bit the old town area from the new development. Whereas this alternate site plan extends the streets, I'm sorry, there isn't a visual to go along with it.
I think it's the other way around.
Well, and so maybe, yeah, maybe it's a debate, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the other way around, I think it continues the streets into the apartment from Old Town. Whereas putting parking in between that doesn't.
Right, and so, and that's why I wanted to bring it up because, you know, it's, it's worth discussing, although it'd be better with a picture. That we tried pretty hard to circulate earlier, but anyway, though, glad we discussed that. If there isn't, you know, I, I guess that even if we wanted, you know, the only options for that would be if we really felt that we really liked this other site plan, the only thing to do would be to approve with that as a condition. If we don't care about that plan, then we can still approve without that as a condition, right? You know, or if we felt super strongly about it, we could deny because if we can't have that site plan, so, alright, then.
May I, may I say something additionally?
Sure.
So I guess I'm, I'm hearing two different things in the way that things are being described in that. One, there's an impetus for urgency in that the layout is nearing sunset as far as its flexibility. But I'm also then hearing, you're indifferent, the layout is a guess. Those were direct, that's a direct quote from the Plan Commission from last week. So i- is it, is it set in stone or is it a guess? Because I think there's, there's a lot of leeway there in the language that's being tossed around in these meetings. And I don't think it's very clear as to what the commission members or the board members are voting on. The other thing I would say is that the existing site plan has parking around the entire building. As where the alternate has parking maybe in the rear of the building. So I think looking at some, at some real examples would, I think, benefit some of the board members.
Just so the public's clear and most importantly, you all are clear on the process again, we went through this. So you have a certified proposal from, with a recommendation to approve the site plan and the ordinance that's in front of you. You, and so that's, that's what tonight's about. You can, you could continue or you could approve as presented with some reasonable conditions or commitments. Vanessa, I would say, I, I don't think, and there's some case law on this. I'm not sure that substituting a new site plan that is substantively, and I, I think that is substantively different, the proposed, the, the third site plan tonight, with what the Plan Commission, after public hearing and consideration, put in front of you. I don't believe that that would be the type of commitment or condition that the Town Council could impose. If the applicant wanted to say, sure, this looks good to us, we're, we're willing to accept it, then I think that the courts have said those types of, of things may be acceptable. So really what you have is here's what the, the Plan Commission has put in front of you and certified. If you want some reasonable commitments related to, I don't know, improvement location permits and the timing of those or the, the traffic study, making that, you know, a requirement to be submitted before Adam would issue an ILP, the improvement location permit, that is all appropriate. But really, the, the, the spectrum of things for the council to do tonight is pretty limited. And, you know, approve with some reasonable commitments, conditions to what's, what's presented, approve as presented or deny.
A couple of things, just to comment, real quick from a developer standpoint. On Josh's layout, I know just in the, the two minutes that I looked at it on Alex's iPad, there that there are some things in there that I know, not necessarily that Adam dislikes, I won't say that, just that he steered us in a different direction. There are some things in that layout that we had thought of originally also and through multiple discussions and meeting after meeting with Adam and with Joe, we steered away from some of those things. Two of them being, one, we as a developer try and avoid large parking lots. We call it a Walmart parking lot, we don't want, we don't want seas of parking. We want the parking to be as concise as possible. It's the least attractive thing in any community. It also generates no tax revenue. The other thing with regard to what Josh said about there's parking on all sides of the building, that's by design. So if you think about parking on only one side of your building, if your entrance for your particular unit happens to be on the opposite side of that building, most people don't want to walk all the way around the building to get to where they're going. They want to have access both ways. It also creates, the reason, another reason we designed that way is for fire purposes. Having fire accessibility, I believe, I believe it's a hundred and fifty feet. A fire truck has to be able to get within a hundred and fifty feet of any point of the building. That's another reason we do those things that way. So with all due respect to Josh, the layout is something that we had considered at one point also, but we've evolved for a variety of reasons, either due to our own experience or in conjunction with, working with town planning staff.
Well, that, that makes sense.
I'd like to say for the record, because a lot of people have been saying what I have said or I haven't said, is let, let me be very clear, as clear as I can be, is I like Josh's plan that he put together, I think it's a great plan. The timing is bad, but the plan itself is, is really good. Well, we've, the goal from the get-go with this project from a planning perspective has always been to try to extend the neighborhood feel of the south side of Fortville, rather than having kind of a newer suburban type of project that felt separate from that. So to that end, we've tried to have some street connectivity as much as possible to try to create a neighborhood feel, an urban neighborhood feel, a small town neighborhood feel as much as possible. And so trying to get Loth to where they're at right now has, it's taken a lot of, it's, it's taken a lot just to get to where we're at. So again, I, to be very clear, I think his plan has a lot of merit. I'm, I'm grateful that he put it together, I wish it would have come earlier. And it sounds like, you know, per, per, per Alex, the choices that you have are a little bit less than what I even thought that you had. So that being said, is that the plan that's before you tonight, I think from a planning perspective is also a good plan in that it achieves a neighborhood feel along the center of those units, the center of the, the buildings. And secondly, it is connecting the south side of Fortville to South Madison Boulevard. So I think the, the good news is that if you were to go with the Plan Commission's recommendation that's been vetted, I think it is, it is a good plan. But again, I'm not knocking that in any way because I, I like it.
Right, so, so it could be kept in consideration if this further analysis causes you to have to rethink some things. Maybe there are bits and pieces that could be reconsidered, right? And like, that's, that's what it sounds like. And all of that will be governed in terms of the zoning laws where you go back to Adam or you go back to the Planning Commission. I have a, just one more question about that then, because it sounds like there's not a big enthusiasm for trying to do the other site plan. So that's fine, that's a totally normal outcome of that. But just a follow-up question on that topic, what do you think has caused the churn on the parking? Like, loo- looking back at what's happened so far and then looking ahead at what's going to happen, you know, what will keep happening down the road? Could you advise us on what you think has caused the churn that caused you to be the monkey in the middle or however you refer to yourselves?
You know, we, we as a petitioner, this is a, I think I said at the first reading, this is a, this is a, this is a tricky game. From a perspective of, we're trying to accommodate what the market will bear, what, what we can build as a developer, what, what we think will be market rate multifamily units, what the council wants to see, we have five opinions on the council, we have seven opinions on the Planning Commission, we have a planning director's opinion. So we're, we're juggling a lot of balls here. So somewhere in the middle of all that opinion, we hopefully arrive at something that fits everybody's needs. So to answer your question on the parking, I, I think it's us trying to be responsive to, to what the town as a whole wants. It's not uncommon for council to want to see one parking layout. Planning Commission have an opinion and want to see something different. Planning from a purely planning perspective, want to have the parking oriented in such a way that it makes sense from, from a true land planning perspective. So we're, we're trying to accommodate all of those opinions and arrive at that nucleus that, that makes sense. And this is one thing, I, I'm in Tanya's camp a little bit on this. We, there are several other aspects of this that I think take priority. The parking is important, I think there are some other things that are a higher priority than that. The parking will fall where, where it may as a function of engineering, ponds, utilities, take your pick. There's a variety of things there, but we don't feel that we've been treated unfairly in any way, shape or form. We're trying to be responsive to all the differing opinions and arrive at that spot in the middle that makes sense. So it, like I said in the, in the very beginning when I first spoke, was that we're, we're a little bit indifferent to how the parking falls. And I told Planning Commission, if I come back with a quote-unquote substantive change, it's going to be because of a, a solid reason. It's going to be because of topo, it's going to be because of a utility, because of hydraulics. I'm not going to change it just because I don't like the way it looks, I, I'm indifferent on that. I'm going to have a very solid reason as to why I would come back and ask for that change. So, does that answer your question?
Sure, well, well, not quite. So, so what I'm saying is, you said earlier that there was, you know, there's been churn and there really should be. I, I'm surprised because I don't know, we just show up here and, you know, and, and do what we do and vote on things. And so I'm, I'm not personally privy to a lot of what churn there would have been. There should be a source of truth, it should be the comp plan. You know, I'm not, I'm kind of new here, so I'm not terribly familiar with the comp plan. But are you, you know, I'm, I'm trying to see what we could do here by way of, you know, we vote on something and this is kind of like a vehicle. We can add conditions or exclusions or things like that to, to kind of help guide things. So if there was some sort of churn and if it had to do with inconsistent guidance, you know, and if there's some way that we could tighten up the guidance to make things flow more smoothly, I'm, I'm trying to help you out here. But, you know, because now, now that I've thrown the wrench in with the other site plan that we had to look at on, on iPads and stuff, forget that, now, now trying to tighten it back up again. So forgetting about that churn from twenty minutes ago, what could we do to help you avoid more churn in the future, like through this vote tonight?
I, I'm not sure. Like I said to Planning Commission, this is, this is designed by, by your ordinance to be a land use function. Is this an appropriate land use for the subject property? So with regard to the churn, to, to use your word, on where the parking falls, I, I'm here again, I, I'm just not sure that we're, we're at that point where we're, we're thinking about laying out and parking. We're at a point where we're.
I don't think you need to be, yeah.
Is this an appropriate land use? And so we will get concerned about parking and how it lays out and the flow and the things I mentioned about fire and a hundred and fifty feet and, and parking on both sides of the building and all those things. Are we concerned about that today? Not as much as we are about what we perceive this process to try and achieve, which is a true answer to the question, is this an appropriate land use or is it not? Like Alex had stated, there's a time and a place and Brian as well, for us to entertain parking geometry, hydraulics, building layouts, building architecture, those things, it's just not today. And the reason I don't have an answer for it as to whether or not I'm firm on where that parking needs to go or not is because we just frankly haven't given it a great deal of thought to this point in time.
I was just, sure, I was just concerned because that doesn't sound normal to have a lot of churn where somebody's telling you one thing and you make a design and then somebody tells you something, I should make a different design. That, that doesn't really sound normal, so I was just concerned that maybe there's something amiss.
It, it does, it's not that uncommon.
I'd want to, here, first of all, with due respect to your question, if it were in a courtroom, I'd say, I object. You're asking me to speculate upon someone else's state of mind. I think the discussion turns on one of two viewpoints, both of which have merit. Do you want the extension of South Madison to have a boulevard feel? So there's parallel parking on South Madison? Or do you want your living space to have that boulevard feel with parallel parking, closer proximity and so on? Either works, it's just a matter of policy. But we don't set policy for Fortville, we try to respond to the policy as presented. I will say when this came up, the, the parking was internal. I heard Mr. Zypalakowski's comments about his vision and it, you know, convinced me, that makes sense, that's going to give it a neighborhood feel. It's going to be cozy, if you will. And fortunately, I had a client that was flexible on this point. Does that have any help?
I think we just keep beating the same horse here, so.
I think you're just not telling me the answer, but.
That you want to hear, that you want to hear, so.
I can, I can second Brian's saying that I find myself oftentimes for clients on that side of the desk doing zoning in Indianapolis and frankly, I've done it all over the state and it's pretty common. It's pretty common that, that, you know, this path, I mean, Indianapolis is a, is a whole other beast. And so i- i- it's, this isn't uncommon and I think it's a healthy part of the process to have this discussion and, and figure out what's right for Fortville.
I think it's appropriate for you as a council, a planning commission governing body, a planning director. I'd frankly be a little bit more concerned if you were all in complete agreement with one another. I appreciate the fact that you're looking at things through different lenses, which is appropriate to give a different perspective on things and that's, that's healthy. So, yeah, we're, we're not, we're not disturbed by that process at all, just trying to find that middle common point.
So when you and I first met, I told you I didn't want any apartments, right? Remember that? And I, and I still feel that way, but we've proven that it's, that we need it. You know, so you have to take in consideration the need versus what you really want. I mean, we didn't, you know, we, we hear from everybody in town, nobody wants any more apartments, nobody's going to, you know. But, but the need is still there, the county has determined that and, and I'm okay with it as long as it still creates some kind of neighborhood feel. I don't want some big, you know, that's, I appreciate you guys doing these, these other renderings of what, I like those really well. More than, more than the first.
The way we laid this out on, and Adam was very vivid in his vision for the town and having the connectivity to Old Town to the west and making sure the streets connected and having a nice transition. He was very clear about that, that vision on behalf of the planning department, on behalf of the town as a whole. So we tried to accommodate that as best we could with the street connectivity to, to the old town area to the west. And so I, I feel like we got good feedback. We've gotten good feedback from, from all avenues, whether it be Adam or council or planning commission, we've, it's all been good.
The industrial piece has always been fine. I mean, it's a good piece, it looks nice and exactly what I think we're looking for over there, so.
So, so Tanya, your comment actually, um, is related to something else. I was wondering, this was another comment from the public. Um, the, this PUD doesn't mention anything about specifically apartments, you know, just as residential and it says units. There was, you know, because people go online and ask questions about things. So there was a question, you know, why can't these be condos instead of apartments?
And I have addressed that and I'm aware of develop, I, I understand development and I know how expensive it is to do that. So the opportunity to have a developer do that's gonna be slim, but that's obviously what I'd like to see, but that's not gonna happen.
I just meant it's not clarified, so.
Whether they'll do that or not.
Are we to assume it's apartments then versus condos?
In the ordinance and item.
Two, a.
Two hundred and twenty-five units.
Those buildings will be multifamily residential.
Does that mean apartments specifically?
Well, it has to be multifamily. Two hundred and twenty-five units.
I thought that meant multi, I don't know, I guess I just didn't understand what that meant. Multi, multifamily to me means. More than one unit, you know, so, but that means apartments then, okay.
You could probably, correct me if I'm wrong, Alex, refer back to your own. Ordinance and definition of what multifamily means in the town of Fortville.
But yeah, i- it's apartments. It is apartment condos or without, you know, they're, they're legally distinct from, I believe our ordinance defines them differently as well, so.
You guys have any questions to add?
I'm satisfied and I, I can make a motion if you want me to. If, if unless anybody else has anything, I, I, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash three B. Um, the PUD for the Mercho Louth project with the condition of the traffic study being done.
And also there was a suggestion of an exclusion of no warehouses in the industrial area. No, it doesn't say it in here, but that was another suggestion of something else to add.
I'm just gonna keep my motion the way it was.
Looking for a second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, gentlemen. The abuse is over for now.
I, I resent that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And I enjoy this process, I truly do.
Thank you to the public and to Vanessa too.
Yeah.
I appreciate all those thoughts.
Okay. Oh, business, we have none. Go on to departments, uh, Joe.
Okay, just a few quick things for you this evening. Uh, I wanted to shout out to Sydney Townsend, which is our, uh. Water and sewer plant operator. She's been working out there with Dave for a couple of years now. She has passed her class two waters or sewer certification, so she is now a certified. Waste water and treatment plant operator. Uh, we're trying to get all of our people certified and educated up as much as we can, so I'm very proud of her. Um, been talking with Reynolds, uh, to do an open house for the new water treatment plant. There's a few more little things that we're finishing up out there and, uh, we'll be letting you know what the plans are with that. So there's more to come on that. And just to let you know too, that we are doing a little research on our cybersecurity and also our utility locations. Our service agreements with those folks. So as soon as I get some more information, I'll be back to you folks with that and. Maybe as soon as the next council meeting, I'll be asking for approval for the cybersecurity.
I, I thought we were good cyber wise, but.
We can always do better.
Well, that's right.
Yeah. In fact, when I went to the, uh, Indiana Municipal Managers Association meeting this last, what was it, a week or so ago? That was one of the big topics up there and, uh.
As it should be.
Did they have any good people to recommend when you were there?
Uh, actually, I'm interviewing one of them now.
Good.
Actually. There's a couple of them that we're talking to, but, uh, one of them was from that meeting.
Good.
Yep.
Cool. Any questions for Joe? Moving on to Adam.
No, nothing for me. I think we've had enough of planning and development for one evening, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to, uh, address them. No? Alright.
Keith, you're up. Are you ready?
Trying to make this quick, Keith, with the Mark's Parks Manager for the record, um, I'm gonna give each of you guys a copy. One knows, um, we've been inquiring bids as far as the playground equipment is concerned. And obviously, we got some quotes and getting, uh, with Mr. Inomil here, um, we had to change. How we did it just because of the sheer cost of some of these projects that we're looking at. So, um, I believe Andy had sent kind of what our bid proposal was. It was emailed to all the prospective, um. Uh, bidders as far as playground equipment was concerned, uh, they had until this afternoon to submit their bids. Um, we did end up getting three companies bid with, uh, four total bids. Um, or no, I'm sorry, three companies and three bids. Um, what you have in front of you is the lowest bid. It was who I expected was probably gonna end up being the lowest bid. It's the same individual that, uh, had done our hill slide. Um, they tend to come in usually a little bit, eh, cheaper and quicker. Um, those were opened up today here, um, publicly in the council room. Um, so what I have before you is the lowest bid. Um, and I'm looking for approval to get moving on, uh, this playground, uh, areas. Um, so that's where I'm at with it. Uh, if you are interested in what the other prices on the bids were. We do have a bid tabulation sheet, uh, that we calculated today when we opened up these bids. Um, but outside of that, um, that's what I'm looking for, unless Alex, you got anything to add?
Sounds great.
Would you mind reading those bids off just so they're?
Yeah, I can do that just for public record. Uh, so, uh, we had Recreation Equipment Company come in on Site One. Um, which is the Shelter House site just south of the Shelter House at one hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars. So on your bid, uh, you have the hundred and nineteen thousand dollar one. Uh, the Melanda Company out of Illinois, um, came in at one twenty-seven, two seventy-nine. And then the lowest bid was MVB Playground's AAA State of Play at one nineteen, three twenty-four, sixty-eight. And then for Site Two, which is there at the entrance of the park. Uh, Recreation Equipment Company came in at eighty-nine, five seventy-one, fifty. Uh, Melanda came, came in at eighty-one, five seventy-one, forty-five. And the MVB Playground in AAA State of Play came in at eighty-three, eight forty-four, fifty. Uh, I have talked to obviously Michelle and Beth and Missy. And everything is set up, ready to go. We've, we've, we've got everything. We've talked about this. So now it's just the point of getting the approval to be able to start getting the stuff ordered and, uh, hopefully getting some renovations done on our playgrounds.
I think they look pretty cool.
Does it include everything, the?
The music instruments.
Well, does, is it gonna look like that? The turf, the. Smooth.
It's going to be poured in place rubber.
Okay.
It's going to be, if you've been to the new Pendleton Park or any of the newer parks, it's the solid but soft form place rubber. Um, curbing around just the works as far as that's concerned.
And then you're doing it like a, a path, a sidewalk to it?
Yeah, so that'll be separate from, and I'll come back to you guys at some point in time. Um, we will have ADA accessibility, um, worked into those, but that will come more than likely from an actual concrete company to be able to do that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah.
First and foremost, we gotta get the playground done. So playground people had asked that none of the sidewalks and anything be put in until they're done. Obviously, they don't want to run heavy equipment over new sidewalks and things like that. So sidewalks will go in, sidewalks and curbing will go in last.
So how long does it take him to get all this stuff?
Uh, that's kind of where we're at is once we get this approval tonight, if you're so willing. Um, I know one of those units was somewhere around six to eight weeks out. Um, so it takes a while for this stuff to come in, um, anything that, uh, we can get ordered. And that's what we will do, just so the council's aware, from a payment standpoint. Uh, most of these companies, a few of them ask for a hundred percent payment first. That company in particular will ask to pay for the equipment so they can get the equipment ordered and then we won't pay anything until after installation. And we give them the thumbs up that we're happy with it.
Like that better.
Me too.
I'm excited. I think it's gonna be awesome.
Absolutely, great, man.
Okay, looking for a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve the NVD Playground bids for both sites. Do I need totals? Do I need to put totals in?
As, as presented, it's fine.
Okay, as presented.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Okay. You're good.
That's all I have and we'll see if anybody's got any questions for me pertaining to the park right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Exciting news.
This is not here. Oh, we got chief.
Yep, um. And, and Joe told me to be brief, so. Uh, I apologize for not being here last meeting. I was ill. Uh, for the public's information, there's a copy of this back there on the table if anybody wants to view it. It's my quarterly port, report for the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. Just goes over our monthly training. How many hours our reserve division worked. Um, what was shocking to me was our calls for service.
Yeah.
January, we took fifteen hundred and twenty-nine calls for service. Last year, we took eight hundred and ninety-eight. Adding five hundred and forty calls for service in one month. February, we added nine hundred and eighty-seven extra calls for service in the month and March was five hundred and seventy-seven. Those are generally our slow times of the year. So I don't know what it's gonna look like for second and third quarter when our busy times come, but we will see. Um, accidents were only up four for the year. Um, we had more snow. You know, we had that day or two, we had some snow, um, and last year we didn't have hardly any, so that usually attributes to it in the early months. Um, I do want to let everyone know that after six months. Detective King, Officer Freitas, Officer Chapel and Sergeant Kessinger identified and arrested the Speedway suspect. Who armed robbed the Speedway, so he's currently in the Hancock Hilton. Um, so kudos to them for a, a long extent, extensive investigation and, and good work to them, so.
Awesome. Congratulations on that.
Yeah. And then, uh, got a call from the prosecutor's office today. Again, Officer Freitas, he's Spanish speaking. Um, he was able to interpret some things on some phone calls and we got some, uh, charges bumped up. So the Hancock County Prosecutor, Brendan, wanted me to, to tell Art he did a good job. And he appreciates your hard work and dedication to the community. So, thank you.
Thanks, Art.
Other than that, I don't have anything unless you have questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex, you have anything?
You've probably heard enough from me tonight too, so unless you have any questions for me.
Public comment? Mr. Starett?
That's right, Bob Starett from Fortville. Just a couple of thoughts, listening to everything that's been going on tonight. Um, I don't know where else the information was shared. But my thought is that Facebook and Fortville Happenings in particular are dumbass places to put information that you want to be considered. Along with that, I do want to say, I appreciate all the extra discussion that took place from her. I, so many times over the years, there's been something brought by title only and let's pass it. And most of us don't know what you're talking about. It's gotten more and more involved and I do appreciate that. It may have been painful, but I do appreciate the extra discussion tonight, because we don't know, I, I've not looked at those, this, you know, the plans. I was okay with Adam and everybody else approving. I was fine with that. Didn't even know there was a second plan. It should have been presented a long time ago, but that's just my thoughts, so.
Thanks.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Um, I'm Taylor Foreman and I was told to come. I'm having my wedding, um, June fifteenth. And I was told that I had to ask the council for approval to have alcohol at my wedding.
That's going to be in the park.
Yeah.
You meant, meant, and amend the ordinance to allow that for your wedding. That's what you're requesting?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
You're okay with that, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, do we need, do we need a?
I, I would say, I mean, if, I think in the past, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, we've just asked to have a copy of the, the catering authority permit. That you'll get from the AT or whoever caters your. You're doing your, your, uh? Okay.
Yeah.
Like it is, we, we actually have an ordinance that prohibits alcohol in the park.
Right.
So she's asking for variance or an exception for her wedding.
Yeah.
For that ordinance.
Is there any worry about like over serving or anything like?
It's not that many people, so.
She's just going about it the right way.
Yeah, I mean, usually, like, they're like, you need a permit. And I called and they're like, you have to go talk to the council. So I just wanted to make sure everything was good.
Do I need a formal motion?
Y- you do. And the only other that, that I recall coming up since you're. BYO. BYLBO, whatever you're into. Uh, it's crash, just making sure that everything is cleaned up. That's, that's what I recall the discussions have been in the past when we've had these requests, but.
That's part of the agreement, isn't it, Heath? When they rent the facility? Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance of the ordinance that she's allowed to have alcohol for her wedding in the park. On June fifteenth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I hope it's beautiful weather.
Yeah, I hope you have a great wedding. Yeah.
Okay, council comments? Posty, are you coming up here? Come on up, come on down.
I'll be quick, um, Gary Sherritt. And in the South Corridor thing, the connecting of seventy to sixty-nine corridor. Who's in charge of designing and the planning this future or who's doing that?
The county. Are you talking about the big project coming off of seventy?
Yeah.
Does.
I, what I'm saying. The school out here, we have a cluster out there in the morning and the evening. So.
True.
To me, we're not gaining that much connecting the corridor unless we're gonna put in a skyway.
I, I, I feel like, this is my personal opinion, I don't know that, because I haven't gone to none of the meetings, but I feel like. It's not gonna come down two hundred when it comes out of Mohawk. It might go a little bit more east. Um, on the other side of Fortville Pike where it will connect to South Madison. I mean, because I, I don't see any point in them going through two hundred past the schools, because it's not gonna work.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't think any, it's the best kept secret in Hancock County, I think, about what's happening with that plan. And we might not even be here to see it, though.
You know, we don't know how long we're all gonna be around.
That's right, that's right.
I know that's a cluster out there now the way it is and.
Yeah.
That's an understatement, cluster.
If, if I could weave in a little bit, I know Gary Poole, the county highway engineer, he's probably. The most knowledgeable on which way the road's gonna go. I know they're working on their comp plan as far as the, uh, two hundred and West Seventy interchange. Um, I think one of the big projects they're working on, they're, they're looking to make in three hundred West, one of the main corridors coming in town. Um, I've expressed my concern with that because having the trucks come up and then down through town and up through thirteen is. Can just put more truck traffic through here. And I do know that, uh, NDOT is working on putting in three new roundabouts. One's gonna be at two thirty-four and three West. Two West and two thirty-four and then also at Fortville Pike and, uh, two thirty-four. So I've been working or been talking with, um, Gary and I know we're gonna have a meeting. In another week or so to kind of discuss some more of that, but there's a possibility that, uh. My thoughts, I mean, I'm not saying it's a possibility unless they all agree to it, obviously, but, uh, if they're gonna utilize. Two hundred or one of those other roads to bring the heavy trucks up, they're gonna, they're gonna go the street route. They're not gonna go around a corridor. They don't have to.
Right.
Um, to try to, to make those roundabouts big enough to move those trucks and some of that heavy traffic to where we can. Try to restrict some of that going between the school campus.
Yeah, I know these roundabouts, they need to make them big enough.
Yes.
I see the ones down there on six hundred West are showing their wear already.
Yeah.
Just to be clear, it's not the town council putting the roundabouts in. We'll make clear.
Love them. You know, but. Traffic from.
That it's gonna get a lot worse and it's. That it's gonna get a lot worse and it's part of with this uh South Madison Boulevard that we're looking at and the reason why we're looking to try to extend that is. I mean, we're hearing the conversations about the interchange at seventy and two hundred. We're hearing about, well, you obviously know that the big Walmart facility, Amazon, there's another large. Development that's going in, it's all supposed to be secret, but there was gonna be a lot of uh, a lot of traffic. That's gonna be coming up through this direction, so trying to build in some sort of a relief for the community is.
Express, right?
I don't know about an express.
Calm down.
It's definitely a concern that we're all, we've all gotten the. Yep.
Thanks, Gary. Anybody else? Okay. Council comments?
No.
You have a comment?
Just to uh thank everybody for listening to the extra discussion and uh, and I wish the Starets were still here, I would have said, uh, you know. Facebook is where a lot of things just happen and if somebody from the public is gonna say something, that's where it's gonna be anyway. So I'll just have to catch up with them in town.
But it isn't always true.
They need to come here.
Facebook.
Yeah, they need to come here.
What, everything you read on Facebook is not always true.
Oh.
It's not real life.
Fair. Not always nice.
It's another world.
Um, we need a motion to approve side vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
Make a motion to adjourn at eight oh one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.